Chairman, I'd like to call the order. Call an order, the Village of Lake Barrington Board of Trustees Meeting, Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. It is 7:02 PM. And would the Administrator please call the roll?
Trustee Brainerd.
Present.
Trustee Gates. Trustee Perkins.
Present.
Trustee Schaller.
Present.
Trustee Schaller. Trustee Van Ruij.
President Burke.
Here, thank you very much. Would you all please rise and join me in the State of the Month of Allegiance?
I, the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic, where it stands, one nation under God, united as one, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Agenda item four is approval against the Board of Trustees meeting on September 7th, 2025. Does anyone have any comments or corrections for the Administrator on those notes? I see that there are none. Throw out a motion to approve, please. A move by trustee Schaller.
Second.
Second by trustee Brainerd. Would Administrator please call the roll?
Trustee Brainerd.
Yes.
Trustee Perkins.
Yes.
Trustee Schaller. Trustee, excuse me, President Burke.
Yes, thank you. Next item, by President's remarks. We have a couple of visitors here potentially. I see that Senator Bills is with us. I'm going to introduce you prior to. Senator Bills is someone who knows what we do very, very well because she was formerly a trustee in the village of Barrington Hills. How many years were you a trustee?
Four.
Four years. So she knows what it was like up here for of the local government. Appointed in February, correct, replacing Senator Dan Conkey, who most of us knew very well and who was a great friend of the village of Lake Barrington. We're happy to have you here. We know you will also be a great friend of the village of Lake Barrington. So without further ado, I would ask that Senator Bills that you come up and introduce yourself and address the board. Thanks again for being here. And will you hit the microphone button in the center there? There you go. Perfect.
Thank you, President Burke, and thank you to the board for having me here this evening. Darby Hills, here State Senator for the 26th District, happy to be here. I stepped into this role of public service because I believe that government should be about solving real problems and being able to help our communities thrive. This belief guided me through my role as Cook County Prosecutor down in 26th California, my role as trustee for Barrington Hills. I was also on zoning planning from the very first with a lot of the issues that you are all dealing with. It also has led me with my nonprofit role. I've been running Barrington Children's Charities as a volunteer, you know, volunteer organization for 14 years. We are a special needs charity. We feed 550 kids a week. They get breakfast and lunch to the government. We send mobile dentures to go to other served communities and have mental health counselors. And this also has led me into this role that I'm honored to serve. For me, this work is personal. I grew up in a working class family in Cary. I was raised by a single mom who worked two jobs to take care of my brother and I. I put myself through college, put myself in law school, and I'm honored to be able to serve all of you. This year, we had the largest budget passed in state history from the state of Illinois, $55 billion compared to $39 billion when Governor Pritzker first took office. It's 40% increase. They also tried to pass additional taxes on all of us. An additional $1.50 tax on every cabbage that comes to your door from baby formula to prescription drugs. They also tried to pass the service taxes on necessities, not luxuries, I think, from dry cleaning to daycare. And they also tried to pass digital ad taxes on mom and pop businesses that are trying to advertise online. We were able to stop this for now, but I will be back in Springfield next week for veto session, and they are going to be looking to try to figure out how they're going to deal with the fiscal cliff that the mass transit system is dealing with right now. This is something that affects all of us, not only for these taxes proposed, but also the governance back on the RTA board. And there was not a lot of governance for the suburbs, so taxation without representation. So I will be continuing to fight for all of us to make sure that we not only have your representation on the board, but that these taxes are fair and are not going to be overblinded by all of us here in the suburbs. While the budget dominated most of the discussions in Springfield, I also was focused on practical legislation that matters to families and small businesses. I voted for a new law to lower prescription drug costs to end price spend, price sp- excuse me, end sp- I've had a long day today, I apologize, I paid for multiple meetings, and spread pricing and banning pharmacy managers from steering patients to their own preferred pharmacies and making sure that 100% of the drug rebates go back to the patients and to the plan sponsors. It means real savings for families and communities and community pharmacies. I also serve as a minority spokesperson for child welfare, and I introduced a bill, 2381, which would require individuals who are videotaping children in private settings like a bathroom or a locker room for sexual purposes to be treated as sex crimes and that that would, they would have to register as sex offenders. This is based after a real case in Chicago where a teacher was videotaping children in the bathroom, including children with disabilities, using that for sexual purposes and it was treated as a misdemeanor because the child was too traumatized to testify. This is my bill that I'm going to make sure gets called and gets into law so that these individuals have to register as a sex offender and they can't go on to reoffend like this individual did. I'm also looking to focus on making sure that taxes are not going to keep hiking up. As I mentioned earlier, there's lots of other taxes that they want to keep increasing and individuals and businesses cannot stay in our great state. I talked to individuals throughout the district all, every single day. They can't keep their business here, they can't keep their families here, kids can't get jobs here, they can't buy homes here. So I will continue to fight against tax hikes and jump fees. And I believe that if we all work together, I want to be a resource to all of you and I want to be able to be your voice in Springfield. Senator Conkey is a great mentor for me. He has his, on the other side of the wall, I have his original space and we split the space and he has his nonprofit. So I know he worked directly with you guys a lot and I want to be able to have that same relationship and I look forward to working with all of you. So thank you for having me and please reach out if I can be of help in any way. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you walk.
Oh, yes.
Run off. If we have a few questions, it is our practice to go around the dice and I think I'll start over here with trustee Perkins.
Hi, thanks for being here and thanks for all that you're doing. It sounds amazing, the work that you are doing sounds amazing. You're doing the right thing.
Thank you, I'm honored to do it.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Trustee Schaller. Thank you. Well, congratulations and thank you for serving on our behalf. Sounds like we're at a challenge with the elements of what's happening in Springfield and what's happening. What do you really think is will happen budget-wise moving forward?
It's interesting because the governor did not, he stated that the fiscal cliff is not, is going to come out of the budget and he passed on $55 billion. So we are tasked with figuring out how to fix this problem. The problem is if we just fund it and primarily it is on CTA pensions, 80% of it, which doesn't necessarily even fix that problem, it just puts a band-aid and it doesn't allow us to have any additional services. So it's a real problem and I think if we work together across the aisle and I do a really good job of working across the aisle and the legislation that I mentioned, I have co-sponsors on the other side of the aisle. So if we all work together, get in a room and actually have conversations about how we can be able to fix this and be able to do it in a fiscally responsible way, I think that, I think we can do it. But we're hoping that we can have those conversations. You know, the original bill for that was to be two bills, first for governance and then the funding part, and then it was put together and presented on the floor and, you know, 24 hours from now before we're able to review it. And we couldn't even get to the funding because of the fact that as suburbs, we don't have any, we don't have any say on the RTA board. So we're hopeful that they will start with that piece and then we can deal with the funding at that point.
Do you have any thoughts on the ongoing between local municipalities and getting our fair share back again and where that was going, yet going anywhere?
Yes, I told that it won't be cut anymore, if that's encouraging in any way, but I'm not sure if we'll be getting anything back or getting any more at this point. So the governor did indicate that we will not have any more cuts in respect to that from municipalities, but we'll see what happens at veto session.
You've got a lot of good points. Thank you very much for everything.
Thank you.
Trustee Brainerd.
Thank you for coming here tonight. I can tell it's been a long day, so I do appreciate that. Don't wear yourself out too much. I was very impressed with the long history you have with children in terms of that nonprofit. What area specifically, geographically, are you dealing with?
Yeah, so it's District 220, so all of Barrington 220, which includes also Carthage Valley, which is actually where we pack the bags every single week. So if you're ever free, we'd love to have you. Every Thursday morning, we pack at Sunny Hill Elementary School. We start unpacking all the pallets at 8:30 and then we start the assembly line process. And then those are then delivered to each of the schools, everything from the early learning center all the way up to the high school.
I'll come join you sometime.
I would love to have you.
I'm involved with homeless group, so that's something that's near and dear to me. So thank you so much for your service.
Absolutely. Well, we're back tomorrow if you're available. I'll be there tomorrow. I actually put it on my schedule because I haven't been there in a while, so, but thank you, thanks.
Trustee Brainerd is a serial volunteer, so when she says she's going to do it, she'll do it, so I'm sure she'll see you there.
Not tomorrow, but in the future.
She will be there one of these days soon. Again, thank you for being here. I understand long days and you've had one too, but it means a lot. As I said, we've always had a great relationship with Senator Conkey before you. You mentioned him as a great mentor. I have a great mentor, his name was Kevin Richardson, who was village president here and I'm sure you know Kevin, who's been our village president for 20 years. So I do have big shoes to fill to feel qualified because I was well mentored by him. So we have something in common there. You spoke at a Baycock meeting, so, and one of the things that you mentioned very briefly, and I didn't have a chance to follow up if you wanted, I thought I'd follow up in front of our team here, was about you have some in your organization focused on grants and grant money. And I want to make sure that that has historically been a really key for us to both be well aware of what's available and your office has always done a good job of that previously so that we know what's available. Administrator Peterson is excellent to have this brain process so that we are aware and we can get out in front of those in a timely fashion and get support from your office. That would be huge. So I want to make sure that you have a person that we get them introduced to us so that we can create a rapport with that person and make sure that we're plugged in.
Great, yes, so John Pippiati is in my office, who also works.
Oh, okay, so John.
Yes. Actually Deb is my chief of staff, also was Senator Conkey's chief of staff, and John Pippiati was also a Senator Conkey, they're both with my office as well. He's wonderful with that. The website can be very complicated. He streamlines it rather for all of you, so please utilize my office for anything related to grants, we would love to be able to help.
So John will be a good contact?
John, yeah, yes.
Okay, slide that as contact information. I'll share that with Sharon, maybe do a little intergoverny thing, and then they'll just have each other's contact information.
Perfect.
Take it from there.
And President Burke, in response to our Baycock meeting, I did want to let you know that I have drafted some legislation in respect to the e-bikes and e-scooters. So I know that's probably something that you're all hearing about. This is something I'm hearing about, hearing about from law enforcement as well, every single day. So I am drafting some legislation that I'm going to be presenting that will deal with licensing for these specific scooters that go over certain speeds, 750 watts. So I hear you a lot and clear on that and I'm already working on it, so.
Listen to you now quoting 750 watts.
I know.
You're all over this thing now. I appreciate that. And trustee Schaller, who chairs our Public Safety Committee and is our liaison with the fire departments and with sheriff's office, has been also tasked with keeping close to this issue and making sure that we have our voice in this and that we're connected in that. So we'll make sure that we keep everybody in project. We appreciate that because what we realize is for this to be done right and to be enforceable, it has to be regional, if not statewide, because as we've talked with Lieutenant Currie and others about enforcement, it's impossible if every municipality decides to come up with their own unique program, it's not going to work. And we have to be unified on this front and you guys can help us do that, so thank you for that.
So what are you working on? So if there's something that needs to come to my attention, please bring it to me, just as you did. So what are you working on?
We will, we will. If no other questions, thank you again for being with us tonight.
Thank you all.
And we appreciate, we thank you in advance for the support that we know we will receive from you and your office, and you have ours as well.
Thank you, thank you all. Thank you for all what you do. I know what it is, so public services, that is a job, so thank you for all.
Thank you. Have a good rest of your night. Thank you, Senator Bills. Okay, I see in the back of the room that we have Ms. Swanson, yes, from Con Ed. Would you like to come up and introduce yourself, please?
Yes, I didn't think you would know me by name, just.
I have sources, I slide the sources, so it's why you have to know these things. So welcome, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
So we would love for you to introduce yourself and just tell us a little about the role that you play and how that relates to what we do here in the Village of Lake Barrington.
Absolutely. Well, I am Ms. Swanson, I am the Con Ed's Director of the Barrington Manager, who will be managing the Village of Lake Barrington amongst the other Barritons and 10 other towns in this area. I am not a resident, I actually live in Frankfurt, Illinois, so I am further established. But although I am new to the role in external affairs for Con Ed, I have been with the company for 19 years. So I am very familiar with Con Ed operations, I know what you guys need as far as outages, building and any other requests that you may need. And I just wanted to let you guys know that I am here. I have business partners here so that you guys can reach out to me with any of your needs regarding your service. So yeah, I think that's just so good. If you guys have any questions or any concern that you guys may want to bring up to me that I can kind of take out and get to work on or.
Other questions? How many of the board members?
No, thank you, no, but thank you so much for being here. Actually, I was going to ask a question.
Ask the way.
But it's not like, it's not like it could be, it could be like a really, really long answer. I get like, so, no, and I just mean like, it's like more involved than, I just, I always get these, you know, the.
Would you turn it on?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, sorry. No, it's actually a turn right on.
We'll tell you when to turn it off.
So we're constantly getting advertisements in the mail for, oh, send it for, send it for that, whatever, like the green energy and things. So can you maybe just give a good little, like, of those, of all these little flyers that come out, what should we do with it? Like, I mean, I know it's your choice, but like, can you give us just a little?
Well, if there's come from questions, we're talking from a village perspective. If we're looking at those railings, does that mean, do you want to, are you interested in integrating efficiency to village? Can actually reach out if you guys want to look for some things regarding the middle sector. And then the residents, they'll receive those and we would kind of come out, you would contact Con Ed, we would come out and do an assessment of the property and see if there's any potential savings. Is there something that the source can change as far as mold, maybe appliances that would actually help them decrease? And then just kind of give you a little tip on what you may need to reduce your usage, ultimately reducing the bill. So the mailers, we normally, I'm bad at it too, as a consumer, I just kind of check everything. The way I see the paper is like a paper.
Exactly.
You know, but it's at your discretion, we're not saying you have to keep it, but if there's anything or any questions that go about, you can actually send those residents to coned.com or you can kind of surf through coned.com if you have any deeper questions.
Sure.
Right, you?
Yes. Thanks for going in.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Only what you foresee in rate increases with the demand? And all we keep seeing is the increased demand for these energy data centers and obviously they're growing, they're building more and more and more and taking more of the resources of what you can provide. How do you think that is ultimately going to affect the rate structure?
Well, our even on the development department is assessing all of those. I know you guys don't have data centers in your area, we're looking at like in our, my areas, the old population. However, we're not looking at to increase, the recent increases were based on TJM, Pennsylvania, Jersey, Maryland, the regulated transmission organization that actually manages us. So that those charges came from their settlement from the previous year. So they are passed through to Con Ed. We don't get, we didn't increase the rate, that was just their recovery of those funds. So that's, that's kind of what threw a range in this year's plan. However, with rate increases, we haven't come, I believe the rate sheet is posted, but it's not a significant increase for us. You are probably looking no more than 10 cents, I believe, but don't hold me on that 50%. I will have to pull it off of coned.com and I will give you guys the full rate sheet. It tells you for the customer size, whether residential, commercial, it'll give you the rate for each one of those.
Knowing where Frankfurt is, you're a long way from home. Thank you for coming here.
Thank you very much. It was a good ride.
Yes, it was nice of you to come and introduce yourself. We've obviously enjoyed a good relationship and it's important that we have a convoluted flow of information. You know, pursuant to what trustee Perkins has said, I mean, we're pretty active in this space. We, you know, we've done consolidation efforts only on the part of our residents and that's always well received. And so we go through that with your peers and negotiate the best rates that we can group by. I was thinking of one thing that we're working on and it's kind of, it's still in its infancy, but we are really kind of ratcheting up our emergency preparedness and contingency planning for worst case scenarios, power losses, cyber, regional life, cyber attacks, and we're putting together a pretty expansive group and we are going to be studying effectively utility services, gas, electric, et cetera, implications for that. How well insulated are we as a village? Are there representatives of Con Ed that could or would be interested in partnering with us on some of these exercises or at least being available to us to ask questions about?
Absolutely. I can actually get a contact, I believe it will be someone from our emergency commander that can actually address it. But yes, if we can get the ball rolling, get an email started, then I can kind of those are the shots.
Can I ask you to make that connection, please? Don't know exactly, but it just occurred to me and one other person who's leading that is not here tonight, so he might be able to explain a little bit more. I don't want to cart before the horse, but we are doing pretty extensive because what we really want to understand is in the event that we lose power or how do we insulate ourselves? I mean, we're looking at, you know, does this village all need to be a point where we are always have power and light and it's a, and it's a center for gathering center for emergency preparedness? Would we need backup generation? Do we need battery power? Do we need solar power? What do we need to do to protect ourselves? What do we need to do to protect our water systems and the other things that we rely on? So we're really digging into that and we realize we need to involve a local community police, fire, a local hospital. We, and you guys have to be a part of that discussion as a key, as a key partner in delivering the avenues to us, right? So let's make that connection and then once we have that, we know who to go to and when we think that would be appropriate to do.
Absolutely. And any questions you have, utility related, always start off with me and I'll take it wherever it needs to go to make sure we can get the answer to you.
Well, we will do that. Thank you again for driving all the way up here. It's nice to meet you and put a face to a name and now we all know each other and so we'll look forward to working with you going forward and you have a safe drive home.
Thank you, thank you very much. You guys have a great day.
You too. Bye. Okay, agenda item six, opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda, the specific items, and see that there was no one here wishing to address the board. So we moved to agenda item number seven, which is new business, item A. This is approval authorization and execution of separation agreement waiver and release with Julia Powers. Recommended actions, a motion to approve and authorize the village president to execute separation agreement waiver and release between the village of Lake Barrington and Julia Powers dated October 7th, 2025, and to specifically authorize the payment required therein. This was previously discussed at length in our committee at the whole meeting. So I would just like to know if any trustee, whether the administrator, administrator here has any questions or anything to add to this discussion before we put it to the board?
I'm good.
Everyone good? All right. If anyone's call is good, then I would like a motion to approve and authorize the village president to execute separation agreement waiver and release between the village of Lake Barrington and Julia Powers dated October 7th, 2025, and to specifically authorize the payment required therein. Do I have such a motion?
Come on.
Moved by trustee Perkins?
Second.
Second by trustee Brainerd. Thank you. Would the Administrator please call the roll?
Yes, trustee Brainerd.
Yes.
Trustee Perkins.
Yes.
Trustee Schaller.
Yes.
President Burke.
Yes, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is item eight, A through D. This is our consent agenda. Again, all of these items were previously discussed in our committee at the whole meeting. So tonight we will be approving, voting and approving in block following items. Item A, consideration of ordinance of many in the rest state in the village of Lake Barrington, ordinance number 2025 dash zero dash 14, which adopted in section two dash one dash five, municipal grocery retailers occupation tax imposed. In section two dash one dash six, municipal grocery service occupation tax of chapter one of title two of the village of Lake Barrington, village code B, consideration of ordinance updating employee policy manual. Employee policy manuals updated periodically, annually or biannually to update language to reflect new changes that have passed Illinois or federal legislation as well as policy changes that may have been recommended by staff of the village. For item C, consideration of a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the village of Lake Barrington and the Barrington Countryside Fire Protection District to provide fire prevention inspection services to the village for properties located within the village. D, consideration of a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the village of Lake Barrington and the Wacan Fire Protection District to provide fire prevention inspection services to the village for properties located within the village. That's it. Chair, is there any further questions or discussion required in these four items before we put it to the village, please? If none, then chair would like a motion to approve in block items seven A through seventy, as stated in the recommended action of consent agenda. Do I have such a motion? Moved by trustee Schaller. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by trustee Perkins. Would the Administrator please call the roll?
Trustee Brainerd.
Yes.
Trustee Perkins.
Yes.
Trustee Schaller.
Yes.
President Burke.
Yes, thank you very much. And now we move on to agenda item nine, the treasurer's report. First item, this is the approval except the. First item, this is the approval except the audit financial statements for the fiscal year ending April 30, 2025. I see that Tracy is here, Sheldon Fox. And Adam, please come on up. Almost good to see you here.
Thank you.
And please leave us through your presentation. Peggy, did you have any, I'm sorry, did you have any intro or anything?
No, I mean, it's been, in the old days, I would pre with the partner, but you're probably like, I hear now partnerships, you're like the president.
Exactly.
Exactly, the president. So he's run our office for the last few years. I guess, I think this year was the quickest, the smoothest and yeah, great. Good stuff.
Well, we'll reserve the option if you'd comment after I just didn't need to usurp your introduction. I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much. As Peggy indicated, I thought it got out very smoothly this year. One of the things we do in the audit is we do take a look at your control structure. And despite the limited number of personnel, we hope that your control structure was effective in operating this design. We did not identify what we would call significant deficiency or material weakness. When we find something like that, we need to bring that to your attention in our management letter. We didn't have any notes this year, so we did issue a management letter, but it just consisted of recently issued, but not yet effective accounting standards, under government accounting standards for it, just to make you aware that there are a few coming down the pipeline. One will make some modifications to the way the report is looks, the presentation of some of the statements in the report. That's probably more of a us standard than a you standard. The other ones are relatively narrow in scope and so they probably won't be too, have too much applicability. Not only do we not have any significant efficiency, chair, we didn't have any adjustments to the fund financial statements this year. We did make, we did make two small reclassifications for presentation purposes within the, the report, but no adjustments to the funds. So the audit report itself is two sets of financial statements. There's the government wide financial statements and the fund financial statements. The fund financial statements are which about, you know, your general fund, motor fuel tax, open space, water and sewer. That type of accounting, the governmental funds, which is every given the water and sewer, is not what's called the modified accrual basis. It's more of a current focus. The water sewer fund is on a accrual basis, that's more longer focused. When I say that, I mean, long-term assets, liabilities, like fixed assets, that, that's on the balance sheet in those long-term, in those accrual based funds. Modified accrual based funds, those things are kind of run through P and L. That's the fund financial statements. The government wide financial statements, everything's on the accrual basis. So there's either governmental activities or business type activities. Business type activities, the government wide statement, same thing as the water fund. That's the water fund. The governmental activities, we need to convert the governmental funds to governmental activities. We need to identify long-term assets, long-term liabilities to report to governmental activities. So we make adjustments to convert your fund financial statements to the government wide statements. These are adjustments we make each year. Generally come from information provided by management. We're talking about catalyzing fixed assets, depreciating fixed assets, recording net pension liability through I R F, things like that. Other types of long-term assets, long-term liabilities, but nothing unusual there. Our audit itself is an unmodified opinion. It's the highest form assurance that we can give of the financial statements that are represented. In those government wide financial statements, you did report positive bottom line in the governmental activities of about 260,000. In your fund financial statements, you know, the general fund is really your main fund. That's where most of your activity is. And for the current year, you had a positive bottom line, the general fund of about 76,000. And budget, the budget expectations were to have a loss of about 125,000. So you actually came in about 200,000, other than budgeted expectations in the general fund. And again, that accounts for the vast majority of your activity. At the end of the year, you have a fund balance in the general fund of just under 3 million, which represents about 75% of your annual expenses. So that's a very comfortable spot to be, that's a good spot to be in. Not excessive in my mind, but that, but better than the baseline, you know, better than the minimums that you like to see. Just a couple of highlights, you paid down about 200,000 long-term debt. I mentioned net pension liabilities. So with I R F, you get an accurate report from I R F that computes your net pension liability. The difference between the asset and I R F, the pay of future benefits and the present value of those future benefits earned today. And you had a net pension liability of 286,000 and your pension fund was about 86% funded. So it's a good spot. Stars of water sewer fund, that had an operating loss for the year of about 234,000. But included within that is over 100,000 depreciation expense, non-cash expense. So if you kind of take that out, your, your operating loss of about 130,000. And then to add to that, the investment income you had during the year of about 98,000. So from a kind of cash flow perspective, your water sewer fund was down about 30,000, 40,000 for the year. Again, thank, I want to thank Peggy and her team, Jenny, for providing everything when we requested it. You know, we use a portal to request documentation, transfer documents back and forth. And they had everything uploaded and ready for us when we scheduled to come out. And the process much, I was going to say much easier, but it's been pretty smooth the last couple of years. So smoothly, I guess.
Thank you. Questions? Any questions, comments? Peggy, anything else that you want to comment on this?
Just, we'd like to back us with the draft as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Yes, I have a note to myself to say that.
We just need to, we'll send a representation letter, conclusion of the audit. Send it tomorrow. It's usually something about Sharon and Peggy. And we'll get this finalized and get you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we are certainly very proud of and happy with our, our financial staff here. We, nothing that you would tell us would surprise us about their level of organization. They make the less of the rest of us look disorganized at times. So happy to be here that not only did they make the process easy for you, but also that not surprisingly, again, that we're doing so well with our, with our controls and everything else that we do. We take a lot of pride in that. We owe that to Peggy, Jenny, the whole team for making that happen. And you're part of that, so we appreciate your service and your help as well. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you.
You have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Yep. So. With that said, chair would like a motion to approve and accept the audit financial statements for the fiscal year ending April 30, 2025. Do I have such a motion?
I move.
Moved by trustee Bringer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Perkins. Would the administrator please call the roll?
Trustee Bringer?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
President Per.
Yes, thank you very much. Now we move on to treasurer's report.
Okay.
Treasurer Per, please, join us at microphone.
Oh, I saw you saying.
Yes, we feel the same.
All right, well, for us tonight, you have financial statements for the four months and August 31st, 2024. So we're just about to clear through our fiscal year. We'll see, we have total assets of $3,666,000. Law abilities of $425,000, which is this equity of $3,241,000. Just over that $3 million that we just talked about four, five months ago. Revenues for this four months have been $1,626,000. Expenses $1,350,000. Dividends and debt income of $276,000. So as we do this, we compare this to last year. At this point last year, we're losing a H L loss of $15,000. A big part of that is that we had done roadwork at this point last year, which brought that number down. So when you take some of those unusual items out, this year we actually transferred money to the infrastructure fund. Anyways, when you take, sort through that noise, we're shown well called net income from regular operations this year of $600,000 compared to the $469,000 last year. So, you know, we like to kind of look and see what's a big part of that. Like it's going to be a broken record this year, a big part of that is sales tax. We keep seeing these big differences in sales tax this year over last year and actually better than, way better than we budgeted. So hopefully, you know, keep that, keep that trend going this year. You know, I track this and since January 1st, 2025, since this new law went in effect, we collect actually $204,000 from well called new filers. That's why I track it. If this, if this entity didn't submit sales tax for this date and now, you know, sending sales tax on a regular basis, I can't count them as a new filer. And it's $204,000 and it's just in four months. So that's, that's substantial. I mean, I can't even, you guys all know, it's like, oh my gosh. Anyways, we hope that stays in place and we'll keep an eye on that and keep looking at it. So.
Peggy, I need to interrupt and ask a question. Because if I don't, I'll probably forget, because my wife would say, just ask now. You won't remember later. I, I, maybe I'll even regret saying this publicly, but when I was at the Baycon meeting a few weeks ago, I, I asked others about this phenomenon. And guess what? I got a bunch of dead stares.
Oh, I don't know that's happening. You are, yeah.
Yep. So then I didn't know whether to chalk that up to they're not close enough to their numbers. It's not a big enough deal. It's not, you know, like, it's not, it's only a small decimal point. Like I couldn't figure it out, but they were all acting very shocked, particularly when I talked about the impact of online pharmacy.
Right.
And I'm telling you, I got dead stares from every other village president. So this would be true for all of us. Doesn't matter whether you're home rule or not home rule or who, any of this, right?
I.
Do you know? We're talking about, you know, all this.
Definitely.
And these guys all look at me like I have two heads.
Yeah. Peggy provides a fair account, brings a little review. But and there makes a little review explaining how things work with your numbers. And I think, I think that's part of it, that she's, she's worse. And maybe I'm too granular. Maybe.
No, no, no. No, I appreciate what you're saying, but here's the thing. You know, I guess in the grand scheme of things, it's not insignificant to us. And I would bet that it's not necessarily insignificant to a larger village because they've got more people. In other words, it would seem like it would be all relative.
I would think.
Therefore, they would be showing up on somebody's report that says, where is this excess tax revenue coming? Somebody would be asking like, hey, why are our numbers looking so good these days?
Well, the village of Barrington, for instance, already has, I'm assuming, a very large sales tax base.
Right.
And percentage wise, it's not as noticeable, but I, at my bottom dollar, I very closely see what we're seeing.
Right.
I'm not going to publicly comment on a lot of that stuff, but.
No, I understood. I understood. I don't mean it to be controversial or provocative. I was just thinking, maybe it's just the combination of what you said in other words that.
Right.
That, I mean, not, I don't think it's too grand, but I think what it is, it's information that we need to know, that we can act upon. And actively, as I sat in the economic development chair, it was really important to understand that because it was really important for us to understand it particularly as a, as a percentage of our retail sales tax. And also to make sure that we understood, even to know how to look at it with our currently bricks and mortar on the ground businesses versus these, you know, off-site businesses and understanding what's happening with them. Well, because it's really, it's important when you separate them to treat this one and say, this one I don't really control. And now I'm going to take whatever it is. And this one with our 402 businesses, we have some control over. That's what economic development is at the back of it. I don't work on economic development of online services. I work on economic development of the 402 businesses that choose to call me Barrington home and try to determine how we make them better, stronger, and deliver more tax revenue to us. So all those distinctions are important and.
You know, it's possible that they're not signing the confidential agreement, you know, the restrictive agreements. I sort of been a little naiive about making sure I get those reports. You know, if you didn't, none of you had access to that by signing these and all that. Maybe they're just getting those numbers, talking about, wow, this is great, but you know, don't know why.
Right.
I'm going to go out on a limb, you know, maybe our, half our population is on the older side. It's the LBS, I mean, no, nothing, no intended, but maybe there's more prescription drugs ordered, ordered to get.
Yeah, it could.
And I'm really trying to figure it out too. Like I'm trying to figure out who's paying that because trustee has asked that question and I really looked into it. I sent, you know, questions out to local tax and they kind of came back like, well, you know, it's just paid by, you know, whatever. But it sounds to me, if I had $25 copay, my insurance is paying the rest of that. So someone's paying the sales tax. Why is it coming to, back to my village, even though I may have paid the copay? Or I think it has more to do with bigger amounts of drugs being sent to pharmacies. And I don't think it's a lot of our individual stuff, but I keep looking into it. It's, it's multi-layered and I'm having trouble kind of.
I think a lot of it is online shopping though, because Amazon is in LBS system.
We're talking some prescription drugs now.
Yes.
Yeah, but also that. I don't know of places like, I'm just throwing that out there. I'm very knowledgeable with, if he's paying attention to it and they even really understood we got all that online sales tax, that was huge to all, you know, has to be huge to, to the welfare communities in the state.
Well, let's talk about all of the above. I think that, that it may be disproportionately large for us. We probably, I'd like to think that our approach to, to our finances and that we get to whatever level of granularity we think we need to all do our jobs appropriately. And that's a good thing. And the last part of it is, as you and I, when we've all talked, we want to continue to try to understand this because we don't want to be surprised, shocked. It's right. We don't want, we want to figure out whether this is something we're going to be able to continue to count off and start budgeting around. These are all important things, right? And for us to understand if these are sort of pennies from heaven, will they keep falling upon us? Or will they dry up as quickly as they showed up? So we don't want to start banking it all too quickly before we understand.
Well, I'll pull up, I'll pull up Barrington's annual report and see what their sales tax level is. And just see, you know, where this falls in the territory to town.
Yeah.
And they're, you know, they're, I think the economy's picking up. I mean, they've got a lot of exciting restaurants in the village now and, you know. I think the retail, it's hard, they have stores come and go. I think the restaurant season's very strong. It's interesting to see.
All right, why do you think it takes too far down the rabbit hole? Since the race issue.
It's very much, yeah.
So I thought we would just have it aired out right here. So thank you.
Now I'm going to keep you informed as much as I can without, by the name of confidentiality agreements.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we are looking at the budget, actual budget, page 13, 14 for the general fund. Then, you know, nothing really to highlight here. Our revenue is 40% of actual budget that tends to trend high this time of year. We just got to have our real estate taxes in. We get some of this revenue that gets just from, you know, once or twice a year we've gotten in, like business licenses and those kind of things. So pulls that percentage up a little bit, it all catches up. It's not like we're doing way better and it's just, you know, trending a little bit ahead of what we think of for four months. And then the spectrum side, we are at 39% actual budget. There's nothing really to mention there. I will say, going back to, going back to revenue, income tax is trending a little bit low. So I M L hasn't come out with any new revised projections yet because they're what we rely on for projecting our income tax revenue. You know, are people leaving the state? Are, you know, is unemployment starting to, you know, affect the state? And we're getting less income tax. Well, that'll be a little bit more apparent in the next couple of months. But once again, that's almost almost completely out of our control. We do keep an eye on it because it's always been a big portion of our revenue. Okay, I'll turn to page 15, that's the normal full tax fund. Doing well in there, we have $527,000 in assets. We just have a little bit left on the final roadwork invoice of $106,000. Will be coming due soon, I would think, because I believe that project is, we're much finished up. Page 11, we look at the water sewer fund. We have a million seven in net assets in that, in that current assets that we're actually, that we can work with. That actual budget report shows revenue and expenses at this point, trying to close the budget. There's nothing really to note there. We still, you know, keep looking at that and work on our rates for next year during the budgeting process, I believe. And then finally, our new works fund this year, page 27, infrastructure fund, that has about $260,000 in there. And that was recently established back in May. And we'll have conversations in the budget process to see how much the board is going to fund in there for next year. That's all I got before the warrant, discuss the warrant, anything? Any questions before I get to the warrants?
Any questions for the treasurer?
Okay, warning, warning, there's just a few to mention, you know, nothing that's unusual, unusual, but that a little bit higher than, you know. but that a little bit higher than we normally have or that you don't see on a regular basis. So let's keep a township for $9,500 and that was, working on cul-de-sac. Another culprit replacement, $4,350. And then, Wes Cheney and Elsner, if I said that correctly, please. We talked about it earlier tonight. That's for the investigation of the structures in, at Fire Farm. And that anyways is $6,357.50. That's probably the most unusual one that you have on board A tonight. And then, on warrant B, there's just one dimension and that is under the water sewer fund. And that's deuce root control. And this was the smoke testing that was performed. That quote was approved back in July, the contractor approved that back in July. The quote was $22,000 and the invoice came in for $18,073. And that's all I have.
Questions for the treasurer? Okay. Thank you, Peggy.
Awesome.
If no other further questions, then I'd share a like a motion to approve and block financial statement. The financial statement says on August 31st, 2025, pay bills the amount of $171,870.25 listed in the accounts payable warrant to pay dated October 7th, 2025. And pay bills the amount of $194,454.60 listed on the accounts payable warrant be dated, today's date? Yes, dated October 7th, 2025. Do I have such a motion, please? Move by trustee Schaller. Do I have a second, please? Segmented by trustee Perkins. Would the administrator please call and roll?
Trustee Raider?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
President Burke?
Yes, thank you very much. Item 10 is the administrator's report, Sharon.
Thank you, President Burke. I have a couple of items this evening. I've been working with Jenny, our accountant, and Peggy on purchasing manual for the village. It's something that we want to get put in place. I did email it to trustee Hayes and trustee Schaller to take a look at it and it will be on the agenda in November for committee double discussion with hopefully an approval at the board meeting in December. We are having a special conviving meeting of the board of trustees and the plan commission on October 23rd, which will be a training for the plan commission, so the board of appeals. We are working with the Illinois APA on this training and vacant law offices. So both parties will be providing the training. The meeting starts at 6 o'clock and we'll, in order to avoid the open meetings act, we will note, do public notice for the meeting. So agenda will be going up on that soon. And I'm going to be working, starting towards the end of this week and early next week, on employee evaluations. And the plan is to have an executive session at the board meeting in December to discuss all of that. That is all I have for the evening.
Great, thank you, Sharon. Questions for the administrator? No, great. Moving on. Is there a report?
I have one.
Okay, very good. The clerk's report.
All right. This was prepared by Rebecca for this evening's meeting. She cannot attend the board meeting this evening because she is at the clerk's training in Bloomington. It's the municipal clerks of Illinois Institute. She wanted to thank the board for supporting her professional development and education. She is learning a lot to be the best that she can for our residents. So thank you. And a personal thank you, thank you to all of the board for their kind wedding gifts. My husband and Rebecca's husband and she feel very fortunate to have wonderful people in their lives. All of you have treated her with nothing but kindness and thank you, Barbara, from Illinois.
Great, thank you. And she now is Rebecca Jones?
Yes.
Not as the Jones person. J O N U S, correct.
J O N, J O N A I S, I think.
Is it?
So it's Jo- I guess.
Oh, that's right. A I S, maybe. So she is taking that anyway.
Yes, she is.
The Jones from here on. Very good. Congratulations to her. That was a nice report. Please, as she said that. Okay, next is item 12, reports of standing committee. I just have a little intro to that. You'll notice a few switches. So we now see that trustee Hayes is listed under economic development and trustee Schaller is listed under finance, human resources, administration. And that trustee Brainerd is listed under roads and infrastructure. It seems that trustee Brainerd is the only one brave enough to show up tonight to give her a report. The other two chickened out, but I'll have a conversation with them separately on that subject. And I'm a deference to our guest, chief Hansman here. I'm going to go out of order and I'm going to start with you, John, in public safety, if you wouldn't be a soft please.
Well, then, since the chief is here, we're going to start with chief Hansman.
Let's do it.
Well, what kind of department? We appreciate you joining us in your newer role, although I think it's been about six, seven, eight months thus far.
Yes, that's most correct.
It's the fire chief of Waukanda, number one. If you're unfamiliar, everything through Miller Road North is the Waukanda Fire District. And if you want great service for us, we appreciate it. So welcome. And I know you have a couple of things that are coming up.
Yes, we do. I'll just start with introducing myself. My name's Kirk Hansman. I am the new fire district chief. And I come from the Village of Arlington Heights where I spent 29 years there as a career firefighter, working up through the ranks and leading as a deputy fire chief there to take my position here as the fire chief. I'm excited to be here. It's something that I was forward to and kind of challenging myself and looking for these new experiences. But what I want to also say is that just we've been really glad to be working with Sharon. And we've developed that intergovernmental agreement that you all approved, which is great for us to be able to get out into the different villages and to look for fire protection, ensure that everybody's safe. So we'd like to continue that, that process and we're glad that we're able to do that governmental agreement with you. We also wanted to thank you and trustee Judge Schaller for coming and being part of it. We're doing a strategic plan with becoming the district. We're looking at trying to prepare for the future. And we've hired Northern Illinois University Center for Governmental Agencies to do a strategic, to facilitate us working through a strategic plan. And we're looking at all the different villages for representation. And thank you for stepping up and being part of that. We're also looking for a few residents to be a part of that. So we're looking at different areas and residents. So we'll be filling all those positions. And that's coming up by 4/28 for looking for intergovernmental focus group. We're also looking at a resident's focus group. And then also we have a business owner. So we're kind of looking for all these different areas. And then, once we get that information, we'll be coming out with a strategic plan. We should be coming out for the beginning of the year, currently, at least in the spring. So we're looking forward to that. And then lastly, I did want to talk about our, we are having an open house this Sunday. So all residents are welcome to come in and visit and talk about the fire district and what we can do to help. And there are a lot of nice things for kids to kind of keep themselves occupied. We have our cadat program, which is really a model program in the area where we take high school kids, try to get them interested in fire service. And they'll be running like a mock firefighter combat challenge that we can run the kids through. And we'll have coloring books and stickers and tattoos and all that nonsense. So if you have some time, come on out.
What are the hours? From 12 to 3 on Sunday?
Okay, very good.
Well, you don't have to worry about us building a stadium for the Bears at Houston Alphamore.
That's nice. It's true. That's, that's going to keep them very busy.
Any questions for the chief?
We appreciate it. As I said, they do a wonderful job taking care of a large portion, but also with mutual aid. Obviously, you're involved with the entire village. But officially, it's Miller Road North and a lot of ambulance calls into, you know, our area.
Thank you very much.
Much for us. We appreciate it and thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, thanks for being with us. We're pleased to be partnering with you. And as you probably, we enjoy a great relationship and we know that continually. Don't, you know, don't hesitate to call on us if at any time we can be of service to you and your team as well. Because that's how it works all the way. So, and thanks for sticking out with us.
Yeah, definitely.
We appreciate you staying around. Yes.
Thank you.
I bet the rest of you, thank you. Thanks, chief.
The rest of the men report the Brighton County Side Fire Protection District. We want to thank them. They were participants for the barn stamp on up on their trucks. Had a lot of activity, a lot of young people that climbed into the truck, rang the bell, got some fire equipment, things like that. It's always a big hit. And we appreciate their involvement with the barn stamp and what's going on there. And finally, Lieutenant Kirk. We mentioned before, President Furman mentioned, and so the senator loves the ongoing activities with regards to electronic vehicles. I don't know if you have any more update on that at this point?
All I can say is I was happy to hear that the senator was working on some new legislation because I think the, the current legislation is quite outdated. And I know they, you know, like the scooter, that legislation that's current, it talks about scooters that go 10 miles per hour. I think most of those scooters go well over 10 miles per hour. So I think it's probably a good idea that, that the senator's looking into that. So hopefully we'll get some of that new on the books that is more applicable to what we see out there.
And as was indicated, I think uniformity would be essential. So that if, if the Village of Lake Barrington were to pass something and then Tower Lakes or Waukanda were somewhat different, it'd be difficult to figure out what's working in this point. So our efforts to make it uniform would certainly be beneficial. Correct. We have nasty accidents, I'm sure, where it happened.
Not done where.
I talked to a couple of the deputies that work in the area and they had a good call here and there, but nothing, nothing really to raise an eyebrow at.
Well, we don't want to have that at the risk of sounding like a horrible president Richardson. My comment on this is tonight's been a really shining example of the power of regional activism on an issue. It started, you know, we've been talking about it here and we've talked about it within the Baycock community. The last meeting that came up when Senator Hills was there, she said, I wasn't aware that this was such an issue for you. And you heard her tonight, she already went and we said, no, we really need your help driving some uniformity in this and all our safety services need that. And it's kind of cool to watch it start to evolve and come full circle with all various partners because now everyone's sitting up and paying attention to this. And the whole goal is to get this figured out and, and come up with some enforcement and some education for parents and kids because we don't, we don't want you making calls for, for 10-year-old kids who get hit in the street by a pickup truck. I don't, I don't ever want to see that happen anywhere in, in our village or this region. And so we want to get out in front of this thing to make sure people understand that dangers are real and that we're not policing it to be bad people. We're policing it to make sure everybody understands how to operate these things safely so that people don't get hurt. So that's the whole, so thank you.
I know also it's a season of scams. Have any reason updated in some of the scams or ones we should be looking out for?
I haven't heard anything lately. Obviously, before, you know, we'll be coming into the holiday season. And as I remind everybody, every year, just watch out for those packages that are loaded on your porch because we get those calls every year. People follow the Amazon truck or UPS truck around and try and take the packages off of the porch before you get home and grab them yourself. So just be aware of that. Try to work with your neighbors and people that you're not going to be home time to grab them.
Other than that, the sheriff's department reached the, any awareness that we should be aware of?
Not at this time. And no major incidents here reported. I checked my email back and forth. And Lake Barrington is moving right along.
Right along. Thank you very much, Peggy. I know you do checks, administrator Peterson. I saw you get the daily checks of what's going on. It's just routine. If you check a lot of the business, talk about the 402 businesses in the village and you're constantly checking in industrial parks, business park, and up in the marketplace.
Yes. And I'll just add, if anybody ever has any issues that need immediate attention, I know I've gotten some phone calls and I'm always happy to help. But if you don't get a response from me right away, you can call the non-emergency number. If you need to speak to a command officer, you can, or just look to dispatch and know what your problem is. If I'm not working, I don't always have my phone on my hip. So I feel bad when I see like a call 45 minutes ago and if there's an issue, I'd rather have it addressed earlier, you know, sooner rather than later. But anything you guys ever need, I'm always happy to help.
Appreciate the service that we provide for both the fire departments and the sheriff's department. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you, Lieutenant. Thanks for being here.
And I report, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Schaller. We're mixing it up tonight, so I'm going to, I'm so excited to hear from Open Spaces' special advisor, trustee Perkins. I'm coming to you next.
Excellent. Thank you. I'll just say. We, so we, as you all know, had the, our annual barn stamp this past Saturday. We had beautiful weather. It was a little, a little warm in the morning.
Yeah.
Wasn't it, Peggy? A little bit warm. But it's, everything went off. Sorry. Everything went off without hitch. It was really, really a great event. The band's amazing and we want to thank all our sponsors, wonderful, wonderful sponsors, Dicky Metzger and everyone. And I just want to thank Rebecca, Janice, Janice, Jonas. It's still Jonas, but it's just not spelled the same. Okay. Thank Rebecca for all of the amazing, amazing work that she did. I mean, this really wouldn't have happened if not for Rebecca. She was truly the main person here. She, also we want to thank all the folks that came out to help, trustee Schaller, Peggy, Rich came out, Peter and his wife and his adorable son came out. And he's, his son, he was so sweet. He's just, he's a hard little worker. So we had a really fun time and setting up and then the event and everything, it was just very, very nice. Kelsey Road House had light. Thank you for whoever approved that. That was great. I guess we all did, right? Yeah. So anyways, it was a great, great event. We had, let's see, the veterans of LBS handed out 400 tickets, right around 400 tickets. And then I think they got too hot because they were like, we don't go. So that was like, it's like, it's okay. And so, but then I talked with Paul from Kelsey Road House and he said he had, he brought 500 smash burgers and he sold, he sold every single one. And then he had other food as well. So, I mean, I don't know, great, we're not sure of the exact count, but it was a good crowd. It was really nice.
Relative to previous, does it feel like less, more, or about the same? What was your sense?
I would say about the same as last year. Yeah, same as last year, but I mean, it's just growing so much. And people, I mean, I can't tell you how many people came up to me and, you know, just residents came up and expressed their gratitude for just having the event, you know. So it's something that is growing and growing and the sponsorship has just been amazing. And people are, you know, rattling it out for sponsorship. So it was really, really good. And thank you to everyone that came out and everyone helped and. Already talking, we're already talking about this, Peggy. I almost didn't get ready to bother talking about this. Um, almost, almost Rebecca was my ticket. Almost. I had a lot that had tags on, so some of them. Yes, it was a good time. Good time was had by all. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm sorry that I missed it. I was.
Me too, just.
Especially all the setup and car parking. It was really sad. No.
Yeah, I know, right?
Thank you for all your efforts, leadership on that, and the whole staff and everybody. It's really become our marquee event, annual marquee event. And it's putting us on the map and it's getting more and more popular. People are talking about it. They're looking forward to it. That's everything that we had envisioned. And we just realized that any event like that, just, we're learning, it takes time to build critical mass, right? Plus you have to do it well. And you have to every year do it better than they did the year before. And we're learning. Every year we learn little things like lights or whatever that might be. And we address that and it just makes it better. So that's the goal. And that's what you guys have done. A great job. I'm really proud of it. And it's a really a cool thing that we get to do and really showcase our ground rule property, you know, in the, in the village at the same time. you know, in the village at the same time, so thanks.
Yes, it was, it was, there are two things that I do understand you about. First off, we had the village president, Barrington Hill, for instance, who was there.
Oh, that was nice, it was a good show.
Well, he was with the Lions Club, he was with the Lions Club. He was calling out numbers.
He told me he'd be there, of course.
Yeah, but, yeah, yeah, see, yes, so he and I were there, and they were just, they were so impressed. And they're kind of friends of mine through, you know, some other friends, and they were really, really impressed, very, very impressed. And then another Lake Barrington, former Lake Barrington president, actually, it was your dad's, your mother dad's neighbor, the Hummers. Oh, yeah. So yes, Laura Kylie went home with a baby goat.
Wait, what?
She had a big goat. They had a baby goat at the, at the Pinn's Zoo, and she was like, "Can I buy this goat?" And we're like, "Sure."
Wait, where does this person live?
She lives in Barrington Hills now, she was former resident.
We all, we all, we all...
No, 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 she lives in Barrington Hills now, she has a partner.
Oh, that's, so that's right, always right.
Yes. Yes, I guess, yeah, it is, it is unincorporated. But, yeah, she lives at LBS, just kidding.
She was on the goat, who knew?
No, but yeah, it was hilarious, she, she like came running up to me, she was like, "I got goats." It was like, we gave, she, the goat had, the goat had a Gucci chain around its neck, because she had to take the chain off her purse and fancy it into a, a leash. And then, I said, I was like, "How are you gonna get this thing home? You just gotta put it in the test on?" She's like, "Well, I mean, never mind." So it was... We get bill stacks on that goat sale?
Yeah.
It was very, it was very, it was a very local goat.
Yeah, did you get any pictures of this?
I do, she's...
All right, well, that's, well, I could, I want to see this after the meeting.
Yes, yes, so it was, those were just a couple of, you know, silly fight heads that happened.
Good one. All right.
There's just a couple other things, too, to, obviously, for trustee Perkins putting it all together. But we do want to point out, the Park District had a number of, what do they call it? Team? Banks, and had a lot of participation in the banks thing. And I've got to thank the Sheriff's Department, too, their team idea came up, it was extremely popular. They did a couple of demonstrations with their dogs, and that was, really went over well, good for the kids, and I spoke to both of those people, they were very, very, very nice, so. I agree with you, I do.
The only reason I wasn't there is I don't want to be the test dummy for those attack dogs. Like President Richardson wasn't passed here, so.
Good morning, my old life.
Thank you very much. Move me right along, we're gonna move up to Roads and Infrastructure, trustee Brainerd.
Thank you, President Burke, it's kind of tough act to follow a dog.
Sure is, that's a problem.
I only have two short things that I have started transitioning in on. One is the Connectivity Committee of Baytown, which I don't know if people are even aware of that. It was established in 2023 to address potential improved connectivity between all of our communities in this region. The primary focus really is to enhance the region's quality of life, and we see doing that with better and new bike paths, pedestrian paths, ways to connect the parks, preserves, and specifically schools are an emphasis, too. So the other thing that they're trying to do, we're trying to do, is advocate on behalf of the entire region, and explore what kind of programs and grants could be used on this. So over this last two, three years, they have developed a really impressive, I have to say, presentation, which we chose to finally sign off on as a committee, and kick it up to the executive committee, for their review, too. We, as Lake Barrington, are impacted by an off-road connection that will go from the forest preserves, Miller, to Roberts, and then Route 14 to Miller, and then Feather Lake Park to Grass Lake, so it's kind of, yeah, if that makes any sense. I'm trying to get a better map of the entire thing, because I couldn't even read the numbers on it. So we're working on that. So that is something we will continue with, and you'll be hearing more about it. The other thing that I want us all to be aware of, because we are about the entire region, and this is a chance for us to give our input. Lake County has a long-term, long-range transportation plan, it's called InVision 2050. Have people heard about this? Good, has everybody gone ahead and taken the survey? Because this is our chance to get our opinions in there, both as residents, as trustees. But we really do need to make sure, since it is long-term planning, that our point of view in terms of how the decision should be made, and what the projects should be, and how prioritized, we need to have our voice in that. So that's one of my things, so let's make sure that we all participate, and somehow I'd like to get the link, share it out to the community, because we need...
We need to email, we need to...
Okay, we'll do that. Okay, that's it, and my report.
Thank you, other questions for trustee Brainerd? Thank you very much. And thank you for your participation on that committee, it's very impressive. I reviewed that at the last Baytown meeting, and it was a nice refresher for me, and it's pretty, it's unbelievably comprehensive and pretty amazing. And so, let's make sure, let's keep that fresh, and I know you've helped keep that to the forefront of progress on that, and how we, as a village, can continue to support that, what employees require, etc., what resources required to execute.
We discussed some of the grants that are available, and we missed the one for 2025, but there is one that will be coming up in 2027 that we really need to be part of.
Very good, thank you. Trustee Dan Ryan's not here, assuming there's no brand new communications report. Economic Development trustee Hayes is not here, but as you know, I would mention under his two things very quickly. One is that he and I met at the Pecorro property that was purchased by Honeybee, Honeybee B Company. We met with the owner, his son, we did a walk-around property to see what was going on. He reviewed the plan with us at a high level, it was kind of a courtesy review with myself and trustee Hayes. It really has the potential to be a beautiful property. And so I'm more excited than I was when I saw what he wants to do with it, and all the work they want to do to beautify the property. It's really gonna blend really nicely. And so I think any kind of concern from residents about this being a business that's gonna be unattractive, or too much traffic, or nuisancey, I can assure people that's not gonna be the case. This is gonna be a really beautiful piece of property, that I think people will be excited to go visit, learn, educate, buy products, whatnot, and his vision for it is very cool. And I told him I can't commit to anything when it comes to plan reviews, and even how the board votes, but I said, "I do know the board thinks that this is a fine use for that property." And we, as a village, will do everything we can to support him within reason, as long as we are doing our duty to the public by keeping them safe and making sure that it's in key with our brain. And there's nothing out of his plan, and when he's trying to figure that, it suggests to me it would be anything but consistent with our brain. So that was great, and following up to that, Sherman's already organizing another courtesy review, we're gonna give a little more granularity with the kind of variances that they need to seek in order to construct what they want to do there. So that's really the next step in the property. And then, once we have the courtesy review, that will kind of inform them as to how they should approach the planning commission, and specifically what they want to ask for in the American, so they're going to be very, very well-prepared to come in and impress the planning commission and their organization, and hopefully get that approved and move forward, so that they're really anxious to get going, they still like to break ground and vote ground places, so they're, they're, they're gonna hurt. So we're good, we don't want to stand in their way, so that was exciting. And after that, I had trustee Hayes for almost two hours, so we did our transition, or at least to now take it over, so he owns it from here on, the Economic Development piece, and I washed my hands of that. Not completely, I never can. And the other activity that we did together as part of reach out, is we went and visited Swiss Automation, and I think that's the big president over there, his name is Mark Marain. As you know, that business was owned and run for years, kind of made up. Ken is mostly retired in Florida, and so Mark has been made president. And so Mark not only oversees Swiss Automation, but he oversees the park shops, and he oversees the property they own, which is the old Forest Press on North Coast Highway. So we toured, we talked about how we could help them, we did their parts and things. Rich and me were hit it off immediately, because Rich has a similar background, and it was really productive. We spent about an hour and a half, and it's a very impressive place. They make parts for the aerospace industry, the medical device industry. They have these super high-tech, hundreds of thousands of dollar computer-controlled machines that make parts, all kinds of parts, a lot of titanium, I was hearing, steel, a lot of plastic, and it is, plus, that place is prominent over there. They are making a lot of stuff for a lot of cool industries. So that was fun to do with him, so that's kind of the Economic Development report. And Finance, Human Resources, and Administration, trustee Hayes told me, he did a lot of his transition with trustee Shawn Moser, so we're considered transitioned at this point, and those guys are in the full road. And finally, under my own report, external relations, I think everything's already been talked about tonight, the Baytown meeting with Senator Hills, so you've heard about that, the E-bikes, the connectivity, it's all on my notes here. Then Brenda and Peter, for their work with Baytown in the past, you know, Peter was doing that before you, and she, I get the Baytown meeting, she's sitting at the table, I'm like, "What are you doing here?" She goes, "I'm on the committee." I'm like, "Of course you are." I'm the last one to know everything. So that was very cool, that was the end of their committee meeting, so Brenda's totally plugged in on that. And last, not least, with Brenda, she and I both attended the OWL Awards, which is Outstanding Women Leadership Award, that was at Bill Maher Country Club last week. Was it, last Tuesday, I guess it was Monday or Tuesday? And we attended it as in support of Kimberly Saunders, who was one of the four recipients, Kimberly is the executive director of Baytown, and she got an award at that event, which was very cool. We were very there, we had about 12 people from Baytown there to support her and cheer her on. It's very, very well-deserved, and the other three recipients were very impressive as well. It's a pretty cool program, it's just cool to see what neat stuff is going on in our community, just kind of like, I feel good then, right? And so that was really fun, and I appreciate you attending with me, and we had a good time, and left with a couple of nothing, meaningless nothing but cakes, that my wife is very happy to see her go with her coffee the next morning. And I told her I traded out the chocolate, and she said, "Oh, good call, because we only eat vanilla." I said, "Brenda got it."
She got it.
And I got the vanilla, so. Very nice bet all the way around, that's that. I think that ends reports of standing committees at this point in time. There is no business, there is no, there are no ordinances, there are no resolutions. I do not see anyone here from the public that would like to address the village forward. There is no interposed session, is that correct? Therefore, as President, former President, you said, "No, there is no other safer parties in Germany." So could I have a motion, please, to Germany?
Oh, you, sadness.
Please pass. Got a report. Motion was made by trustee Schaller, and seconded by trustee Perkins. And I think we need to mostly mark the votes, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? This is efficient in Germany.